Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, March nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, Mr. Don Schwenker is with us via Zoom today.
Morning.
Uh, are your county's Mike Stein, this is your county supervisors, Lisa's our county auditor.
Morning.
Uh, Bjorn is I T, Luann, our executive assistant is with us today. Anne Mary is here from the media newspaper. And first on our agenda today is Mr. Todd Kenny, our Jackson County engineer. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh. So on the uh engineer's agenda here. The first item is the Timber City Adventure Race request. Um. They're they're requesting that uh the county close the run portion of the race. Which would be from it's a Hurstville Road from Pershing in town all the way up to uh the Hurstville uh historic district. And then they wanna sixty-third and Rockdale, that intersection, they wanna put a, they're asking for a deputy there to do what's called a soft closure, just to stop traffic. And only let them through when there's no runners kind of thing. So I left a message for the sheriff's office to see if if Timber City had contacted them, but. This, what's on the agenda is to allow um. Us, the executive road department to um close that road for the for the duration of the race.
Basically closing Hurstville.
Yeah.
Okay, so we still have the VFW road there that's. Several residents live on, would they access from Makoka to out or in one way or the other?
So actually, um, if I can, I'm on that committee. And my impression was we were gonna hard close from Rockdale Road to Hurstville. Where we actually barricaded off. And we would have somebody there to kind of direct traffic as. Cause you're gonna have, the goal is to have bicyclists come down Rockdale Road, get to Hurstville Road, take a right, and then go up to Hurstville. Drop their bikes and transition into running, then they come back down Hurstville Road, run towards Makoka as soon as they get to the walking trail, they jump on the walking trail. And they come into town the rest of the way that way. Um, I didn't, I didn't think in the past we closed Hurstville to Makoka from ru- south of Rockdale Road. Um, to me, that would just be runners running on the west side of the road for about, I don't know, three quarters of a mile. Till you get to the top of the hill, then they can jump off onto the the bicycle track. Uh, that's the goal, that that is the route that has been set. So to me, the hard closure needs to be from Rockdale to Hurstville. So people can still cross through Rockdale Road, they can still, the people on um up there, the VFW road can still get in there. It's just, we will have signage out saying, watch for runners. Um, but I didn't think we were hard closing from Pershing Road clear to Hurstville.
Yeah, so the request says we are requesting full closure of Hurstville Road from the Kins to Pershing Road. Along with a soft closure at the intersection of Hurstville Road and sixty-third Street slash Rockdale Road. So there we go.
Well, let me get back, let us, I think we got a meeting either next Tuesday, we have a meeting Tuesday at noon. Um.
Well, to me, it makes a lot of difference if we have uh support at at most uh intersections, I suppose, I mean. Um, and and there's gotta be somebody at the uh VFW road.
If the VFW, that's gonna be where they basically jump on that trail.
Right, but still.
They are just kinda. For safety.
Speaking, speaking of that trail, there's a lot of gravel and stuff on the beginning where that farmer's pushes his snow, is there a way we can brush that off or? Um, there's a lot of rock.
Is that county?
That was part of the request was request the route be swept of gravel wherever possible.
Um, well, you can, you, there's a definitive line where the snowplow froze. And it's it's uh it is it comes south when you, VFW Road comes south, it's covered and then it, the trail kind of veers away. And there's a definitive line where the snowplow no longer reaches it it. And it's probably about, I don't know, from VFW Road right down to that first drainage tube, I think, is where the um, it needs to be cleaned.
Well, obviously, it probably needs to be done anyway, right?
Right.
I I'm guessing it doesn't normally get done on an annual basis, but we could probably do it, we have a power broom.
Yeah. Is that located here now?
No, the thing will probably just not pay, get paid in the horse.
Yeah.
The adventure races, June twenty ninth.
Yes.
So, um.
You want to table it?
Uh, I I guess, Don, is that your request, or I mean, I?
I look, I I don't see a huge, I they, I know they have all their other permits and closures they needed for in town. Let me just take this back to the committee, cause that, I was in the interpretation, the only hard closure barricaded off road was for Hurstville Road. From Rockdale up to the Hurstville Line Kilns, that's the only part that I was thinking. Because the route, the running route will come out of Hurstville Line Kilns, come down to Rockdale Road, they will take a right on Rockdale, head west to the interpretive center. Come back through the interpretive center, they got a walking trail out through, that's just cemented, they. And they kind of just make a loop, then they go right back onto Hurstville Road into town and jump on the bike path as soon as possible. And we will have somebody right there at Rockdale Road, um, we'll have somebody at a, at the VFW place, and we will have. Somebody right, cause we're not quite sure the route, once you cross the the pedestrian bridge to get in town. But it either, we'll either have somebody at Pershing Road or up at Grove Street where they come back out onto the main street at that point, and then head up the road into town. To the chamber where the race ends.
So we got the route, and I would say either way. If they wanna stop it at Pershing and they have personnel there, I I'm good with it either way, so if they change. If they don't, if it comes back to a different point, we can amend it or whatever, but let them.
I'll make a motion to approve the request at the maximum of Pershing to Hurstville.
Second, I guess, but we can change it.
Yeah, I mean, if it needs to be shortened, it can be shortened. It just gotta let.
I have a motion in a second to approve your request as presented, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
So Don, you'll let me know what the exact closure request will be then?
Yes, sir.
And then if you have a map of where they want swept, that would be helpful, too.
Okay, we'll get that.
Um, that's basically right at the driveway of the.
Well, I kind of, when I heard bike trail, bike route, I thought they meant like the entire bike route would need to be swept.
Well, I would guess you could go to the.
No, the, from the, from the pedestrian bridge up to about halfway to that farmer's house. Is really clean, it's really good, cause the the snow from the road doesn't make it that far. But when you get, there's a drainage tube that goes under that road about halfway to the farmer's house. And the road and the trail kind of makes a little bit of a bend, and it's right in there where you can see it's a definitive line. Um, that the gravel hits and it it's actually more, it's almost like a sand road, once you get to where the gr- the the sand and gravel is. It's almost more sand than it is cement right now, it's covered.
Yeah, well, the the bike, that I thought maybe they would, you check to whether they want Iron Bridge Road and uh. Rockdale Road swept too, cause that's all part of the bike route as well.
Yeah, yeah, if you guys wanna sweep it, go ahead, but.
No, I would dro. That's my point.
Yeah, I've I've driven Ri- Iron Bridge Road, uh Rockdale Road, they seem pretty good. Maybe just take a look at right where the quarry is till uh Hurstville Road, just because. That's where you're gonna get a lot more of the rock coming out of the quarry that bounces out of trucks and stuff like that. I would say just check that area, but I wouldn't do that till maybe the day or so before the race.
Yeah, we're not gonna do it at a time.
I'm not following where Iron Bridge Roads intersects with what?
Sixty-two. The the route is, they're going to put in at Fifth Street Boat Ramp in Makoka. And they're going to canoe or kayak down to Iron Bridge Road. Then they're gonna get out at Iron Bridge, and they are going to bike from Iron Bridge Road up to sixty-two. They're gonna turn towards Makoka on sixty-two, come down to Rockdale, take a ride on Rockdale, come down to Hurstville Road, and then back up to the the Hurstville Line Kilns. Where they drop their bike and they run like normal. Like the old app, you know, then they do their three point one miles into Makoka that way.
Okay. Well, we'll get the, we'll get the maps and we'll get, if there's something has to change, we'll bring, we got.
Really, all you needed to do is the closure part.
Yeah, I mean, if if there's rock on the trail, it needs to be taken over. Next, dust control.
Uh. So you guys had to already approve this, and we found an error in the date for the uh second application. That originally said June first, and that needed to be changed to July first, so that's the only change.
Okay, hasn't been published?
I think so.
Yes.
Do you need to publish it again?
Probably, put it on the website.
But I would recommend changing the whole, I would, I would repeal the first. Resolution and adopt another one.
Good.
Um, that recommendation that we adopt a new resolution with the correct date and we'll bring a ban for consideration next week, right?
You don't have enough ways, so this is just a sample.
Well, because that's, we passed, is it?
So you need to repeal, what's the resolution number we need to repeal?
Ten eleven, uh number ten eleven, I think is what.
It is, third, ten eleven.
Well, here, Mike has it.
There's no number on that.
Oh, um. I will.
You're available.
I looked at it last night, I think it's ten eleven, but I will email you for sure. So what you'll do is you'll just repeal ten eleven and adopt whatever it is next week. We're doing nineteen and twenty today, I'm gonna guess that'll be ten twenty-one next week.
So on this resolution where we established the policy, I just need to add a line that says repeal.
Yep.
So it'd be like. I don't know, you guys do your resolutions.
You know what?
Hey, now, or someone else does.
Yeah.
Maybe somebody else's is, or maybe somebody else's county.
Could be, could be true.
So anyway, you know what I would do, Don, my best uh advice.
Dust controls.
Talk to Shell.
Is it ten eleven? Oh, one, twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
That's on.
Say that again, ten eleven, oh, one.
Twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
So we need to repeal that.
Yes.
And then redo this and have this scheduled again.
Yes.
Okay. Hey, but we got a petition in for paving on Seabirding Ridge Road, so. We've scanned this in, do I just give this to you now, do you guys file this, is that how you guys typically do it?
I think you guys file it, correct? Isn't there one on file already?
Could be.
Uh. When I. Check into it a little bit, um. I thought I was told that there was one on file already, but um. We will, I guess what we'll do is take it in, yeah, you can give it to us and we'll take a look at it. Take it into consideration and then we'll put it on file. As I don't, I don't know what the normal petitions do.
Heart servicing of Seber, Siri, Seberding Ridge Road from the current heart surface northwest ability of the county road. Yeah, so.
I wrote which?
D fifty-five.
Okay.
Don't lose that.
Honestly, I won't.
Okay.
So. Lisa, do you know, early, just. I guess I don't know what, how the petitions usually work, I know we've had them before, but uh.
I don't remember ever taking a petition.
So we can file them, I just didn't know how you guys do that, I know we have files of old petitions, and I don't know if. If those are copies or you guys have the original, if you guys don't typically take the originals, I'll keep it on file.
I'm fine with that, you don't know how many signatures you have to.
I don't have to count.
We'll get it back here.
Okay. Okay, so.
Do we need action on accepting that petition like it, so reads?
You're not taking action on it.
No, okay, just filing.
Yeah. Um. So this one is for a class D uh field entrance, um. It has limited side distance uh for eastbound traffic, so it's gonna need a. Hidden driveway signs. And then kind of. So this would be the third entrance into a forty acre parcel. So I would recommend you consider. Updating the policy to. Handle setting the limit of the number of driveways you can get. So I'm not saying. That, I think we should approve this, cause our policy currently, this meets policy. But in the future, I would say, you know, three driveways for forty acre parcel is a lot. Unless it's split by, you know, a a drainage way or something like that, but uh, you know. It it, it's up to you guys, but uh, I I, like in Clint County, we have a, a one driveway per forty acre. Limit unless, like I said, unless it's got a, you know, crick or something through there where you'd have to access from the, the, the field that's split by the drainage way, so. It just gets to be a lot, since you guys aren't building the driveways anymore, it's not that big of a financial issue, other than now it's. You know, if you got a, and you guys have a lot of limited site distance driveways, you know, we. We get reimbursed for the materials for the sign, but once the sign is up, it's ours to maintain, so. Um, anyway, just something to consider moving forward.
So could that go either way, even if we don't have the policy in place? Can you say, well, you know, there's one, there's a driveway into this parcel, or two driveways into this parcel, it's really not recommended to have another?
No, I would say without, I would say no. Once, until you have it in your policy, it sets the limitations for access. As long as this, and this does meet the policy, there's no reason to uh deny it.
Can I speak on this?
Sure.
This is our family farm. Um, this is a driveway that's on um, on the north part of this field, it's the only driveway that we have on the north part of the field. This actually doesn't feed just forty acres, it feeds a hundred and twenty acres, there are no interior fences at all.
Oh, okay.
So there's no interior fences, it feeds more than forty acres, it is the only entrance that we have on the north side of this field, um. So we do have uh two other entrances, but you know as well as I do, getting semis in and out sometimes in a safe manner, um. I actually went out and I looked at it, since it is our family farm, I thought we could have maybe hopefully pushed it a little more east. But according to Rick and um.
Too close to the intersection.
Yeah, it is, yeah, so.
Well, that makes sense, I guess, and I guess that's what we need to look at is, you know, whatever road footage might be, but then beyond if it uh.
Yeah, so I, I was told it was, there's, it was a forty acre parcel, so that's why I had just. And then if it's into a much bigger field, like Lisa's saying, that's fine, but I still doesn't, I I would still maybe consider setting a limit, because. If it was, let's say it was only to forty acres, you'd probably wanna limit the number of driveways somebody can get into a certain size, like. Say you got a, you you got a bin site in your residential site, you know, you're allowed, you could be allowed to have a driveway to each, or business, say you gotta. You got your house and you got a business over here, but you know, at some point, you probably need to. Set limitations like how many driveways people can access public road to.
Well, obviously, there's maintenance involved and and what. Okay, well, your department look into that and.
Yeah, so I just put the sign and recommend approval with the, the uh hidden driveway sign.
I'll make a motion.
And a motion and a second to approve the entrance permit as presented, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Um. Let's see. Station driveway. Oh, donation request, okay, so um.
I have the utility permit yet, is that on yours?
Yes, it's the last thing.
Okay, I don't. Yours is.
Item six, what I showed is.
I don't have a donation on mine.
Okay.
On this one.
I believe there was a corrected agenda that was set out.
Okay.
Later in the week.
Forget to talk about it.
I did see the email now that you say that, yes.
Okay, so this is uh.
It's on my agenda.
Proceed.
So this is a request uh from the, I guess, the Hurstville Line Kilns to uh.
Historical.
Historical Society to donate two used fifteen inch deep steel I beams thirty foot long. And they're requesting six twenty foot long used bridge plank. And these materials would be to build a a pedestrian footbridge to go over the. I don't know what you call it, uh, but it's next to the old uh crushing buildings as you, as you would go up the, the old. Uh, rail gauge up to where they would dump the limestone into the kilns. So it's a walking bridge to cross that part that's, there's a gap in there now.
Who accepts liability of this bridge once it's built?
Or donating the materials, I don't, I mean, we don't have liability for the materials.
It's not, you're not designing, you're not.
I'm not designing it, no.
No, I'm just saying, once it's up and built, who accepts liability in case somebody should fall off of it or whatever? Or if it gets washed away, because that area, when we do get floods, it floods quite easily.
Yeah, but this bridge is like twelve feet off the ground, I mean, it's, it's, the the bridge is up where the railroad roadbed, railroad bed is. It's not, it doesn't cross water.
So I would accept the historical society will be responsible for the whole area as they are now, correct? Yes, I would say.
Property is on by the Jersey County Historical Society.
So it's their responsibility at this point to have required insurance and.
Yeah, I mean, I put together a quick number, like the beam scrap, if we were selling it as scrap, it's probably worth about two hundred and fifty dollars. And if you sell the plank at like a buck a foot, you're talking about like a hundred and twenty bucks, so. Roughly three, three seventy to four hundred dollars of donating to use.
You don't have any need for these, these beams or?
The steel I beams would not be big enough for a a bridge for us, even in a short span. The used plank, we would maybe have a need for, but we got a fair quantity of those in inventory, so. And we wouldn't, the plank we use on a new bridge, we don't use used plank, we use new plank when we do those, so this would be plank that we took off of an old deck. That we keep on hand just for miscellaneous use, like repairing the salt shed or, you know, that kind of thing.
Okay. If you're okay with giving up with the supplies and, I mean, remove the proof.
knew that was coming, just do it. In that case, we're.
Well. You're gonna have to go to the historical society meeting and ask for the four hundred bucks. What's the board's desire?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the donation request uh presented, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried, I think it's important that we be good neighbors and support our community.
Okay, next is the uh, two uh utility permits approvals, one here is uh. For the uh communications innovators, this is, has to do with the relocation of their uh utility as part of our uh. Hundred and uh eighty-fourth Avenue Bridge Project. Uh, they're just moving their line out to the, the new uh right away line, all boring, so I can. I have seen no issue with it, so. They're gonna, and they've talked to us about where they need to be to be out of our way for the bridge construction and everything, so we've had conversations with them about where their utility needs to go, so. Recommend it to you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and second to approve file of communications network um utility permit as requested, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, uh, the next one is B L B Communications, um, this is a. Pretty good chunk of of installation, but uh. It's on paved road, they're gonna plow and bore any paved road intersections, and then on the gravel roads, their plan is to be at least three feet off the grass shoulder. And if they can at the toe of the slope, just depends when they run into a bluff, they said they would have to move. Up within three foot of the shoulder to get actual cover over their, their installation, so.
Um, B L B's not familiar with me, is it, what's that?
That's the internet that's going.
Bernard Lost Nation.
Yeah.
Oh, Bernard, Lost Nation.
Better local broadband isn't that busy, I mean.
So, I mean, again, we've talked about this in some of our right away, that we don't know, normally have too much issues as far as settling or repair work later on. Correct?
Yeah, a permit allows us to go back and fix anything that date damaged or don't repair, and then we submit them invoices, so we've.
Okay.
We've done, I know in Clint County, we've done that on a very rare occasion where they come in and tore things up and we had to come back and fix it, but.
I know a lot of times, when it's in the roadway, it settles and that's.
Yeah, we. Try and keep them out of the actual traveled way, out of the shoulder if we can, and on the forest slope or in the back slope is ideal, so.
Any other questions?
You're okay with their.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the B L B Communication Utility Permit as presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Uh, but I have a couple miscellaneous things I wanna talk about. Uh. So you guys have been on that email chain regarding the meeting with uh representatives from the C P K C. Uh, we tentatively have it scheduled for uh April fourth at one thirty. And do you guys see the need or the advantage to meet onsite, or do you wanna meet here, or what do you guys wanna do?
Okay, either way.
I I guess I was looking at the emails and I, and the way I was reading is your time constraint, do you think, if they think they could be onsite at one thirty. An hour and a half is enough timeframe for us to discuss whatever they wanna discuss, or can we do it from here via? You know, the. Beacon site or whatever they wanna discuss. I mean, I know we posed a few questions or uh concerns.
You want me to just reach back out to him and leave it up to them, if they wanna meet onsite, they pursue, they prefer to meet onsite, we'll meet onsite. If they don't care, then we'll meet here.
Agreeable.
All right.
Is this open to the public, or is this just for us type of thing, cause to me, the big. Problem we got is when we're trying to look at Beacon Schneider and all that, you don't really get the true topographical. Impression, you know, and would onsite be better just to go, you, we can, where they can maybe even kind of. Do those, stay out what they're doing, so we can see exactly where they propose the crossing of the track and all that, you know, where they can describe it, so it removes a lot of the, the doubt.
It's my, my.
Think you can look at the rest of the terrain if you're onsite and how it's affecting it.
And I don't mind meeting onsite at all, as far as over to the public, all our meetings are over to the public, so. I don't, I wouldn't send out invitations for. Um. It it sometimes gets. Cumbersome if. Plenty of people wanna talk at the same time, but uh, I mean, it's our questions. To the railroad, our concerns as far as the entrance. Or the road that they wanna put in, and if we wanna take it over, basically is what it is, right?
Yeah, I think.
I mean, the elevations and such, we're concerned about, the grade steepness, we're concerned about, um, I know it sure plays into um some local. Um, owners, I should say, of. Houses anyway, or cottages, properties, um, but uh. It's, it's between us and them, correct, that's basically what we're doing here.
Yeah, I think the intent of them wanting to meet with the county or agreeing to meet with the county is. They're, they're gonna be making their case for this new proposed access, access road that'd be. Constructed however we want it to be constructed, so that the county would take it over. That's, I'm, my, my opinion is that's gonna be their intent of meeting with us. Talking about this other access road being flooded, if this other rock, this other crossing is closed, I think that's gonna be a very. Uh, tertiary discussion for them.
I hope they take care of it.
Yeah. So we'll just meet out there at one thirty.
That's fine.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, um, next item. So, um. We had a draft road improvement policy. You remember? That matrix that had, that we had a policy, then we had a pointing matrix, it kind of came up with, for paving, and they had a one total, and then if we wanted. Total, and then if we wanted to do stabilization, it was another total. You guys never really, we reviewed it, but you guys never really approved anything for a policy. Um. You know, we got the Sevigny Ridge. Petition, we've gotten other petitions, my question is, do you wanna? Review this and take action on that policy? Because it's right now, it's just in draft, it's just a draft policy, so.
I would say it should be brought back to us, yes.
So put it on the agenda for discussion and approval.
Sure, yep.
Yeah, please email it back out, just so for easier reference, but yeah, I would say put it on the agenda.
Okay. And then the last thing, we did get, uh, we submitted a site grant replacement. Uh. Application with the new program that opened January first, and we did get, uh, we did get the ten thousand dollars, so that is good, because it's gonna be limited funds. So.
Nice.
It's, and it's, the new policy is kind of nice, it's uh, it's like retroactive, so like you, you do the sign replacements that you need to do. Because of retro reflectivity or what have you, and you just document the signs that you've maintained over, like, say, the calendar year. And then you submit those, and then if you are lucky enough to get the application awarded, then you get the money. So it's not, it used to be like you had to apply for the money. These are the signs we want to replace, go out by the signs, replace the signs, and then get reimbursed, now they kind of flipped it, where you, you do the work. These are the signs we replaced for these reasons, and then they, they send you the money, so. All right, that's all I have.
Do you uh keep a tally of the grants and things that come forward?
What?
Do you keep a tally of?
Yes.
Yeah. Good, thanks.
Yeah, all right.
Have a great day. All right, so are there any, any other visitors or citizens uh with us today, Zoom or present, that I don't, I don't see? That would like to approach the board? Hearing or seeing none, um Miranda Kurt or Jackson County affect, uh Veterans Affairs Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning. I see your minutes for the last meeting, but it's like it was short and sweet, huh?
Yes. All right, just a quick update, um in February, we had a total of thirty-four filings. Fourteen of those were newer supplemental claims, DIC, healthcare, pension, or burial claims. Twenty were either supporting documentation, requested information, intent files, or records requests. Only had seven claims that were decided, so there are currently one hundred and one open claims for Jackson County. The most recent numbers released are from the month of January. We had three hundred and ninety-seven Jackson County families receive a total of. Seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars in compensation, pension, or DIC benefits. This is an overall increase of four thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars since December of twenty twenty-three. Beginning on March fifth, eligibility for VA healthcare was open years before the PACT Act originally stated. Now veterans were exposed to toxins either at home or abroad, or eligible to enroll directly in VA healthcare without first applying for benefits. So this includes all veterans who served in the Vietnam War, the Gulf War, Iraq, Afghanistan, and any other combat zone after nine eleven. It includes all veterans who deployed in support of the global war on terror. It includes veterans who never deployed, but were exposed to toxins or hazards while training or on active duty here at home. So these can include exposures to chemicals, pesticides, lead, asbestos, certain paints, nuclear weapons, and many others. So we just want to urge any veterans that are interested in VA healthcare to call our office to see if they qualify. Um, if they had originally applied years ago, they may now be eligible, so we just want them to call our office, and we can check on it for them. And help them get signed up. Um, our office number is five, six, three, six, five, two, zero, zero, seven, zero.
Appreciate that, I don't know, do, do we compare, or do you ever, um. Like counties are size and population, I guess it's hard to determine. As far as you've been in the service or not, but when you look at this and you think a three quarter of a million dollars a month. Seems like a fairly good number.
It's a pretty, pretty hefty amount, so the report that I get has every county in Iowa. So it shows like their veteran population, and then, you know, how many veterans are receiving.
You know, the next time you come in and give a report, that'd be nice to see one of them.
Compare us to a county our size.
Or maybe just email it, if you, if there's something that's emailable.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I, we certainly want our veterans to come in and apply for this, so hopefully if you're not, you know, maybe an article in newspaper. Uh, did I see that you were on KMAQ?
I was, Debbie and I went on Just Talk last week, that was, that was fun.
So, sounds like you're willing to do that several times a year, right?
We'll see. Yeah, no, it was fine.
Yeah, no, and it's good information to get out there to them, you know, I mean, again, that, that, to me, that sounds like a healthy number. But again, if we can do more, we certainly want to do that.
Absolutely, agreed.
So, um, they'd give up uh a certain part of their life for service, and uh they certainly deserve that.
Absolutely, yep.
Appreciate that.
All right.
Any other questions for?
Team effort.
I, well, yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you, guys.
Have a good day.
You too.
Okay, moving right along. Um. Lisa?
This morning, I need a motion to approve the amendments of the March twelfth, twenty twenty-four board proceedings, written by Auditor Smith and authorized publicly to the official newspapers. So moved.
So moved, for a second.
A motion a second to approve the amendments of the March twelfth, twenty twenty, twenty-four board proceedings as written and published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
I need a mo- a motion to approve a handwritten warrant to Schneider floor covering for four thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-five cents. For a joint project with imagined the possibilities for the material only at the Jack, Andrew Jackson Care Facility. So moved.
Second.
A motion a second to approve the handwritten warrant to Schneider floor as presented. Any further discussion? Do you have any questions on that, Don?
No.
Okay, so we, we did get it in the mail, and that's ha- that's half our portion, which is, which was our agreement with them, and uh, so all those in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And I would anticipate us paying the other half of the labor after the job is completed, so. All right, so I need a motion to approve and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes. For the February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
I need a motion to approve resolution number ten nineteen dash zero three dash nineteen dash twenty twenty-four. Certified delinquent leisure lake sewer assessments to the county treasurer. For property tax collection in the amount of four thousand and thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve resolution one zero one nine dash zero three. Dash one nine dash twenty twenty-four, as presented for the leisure lake sewer assessments, um. Is there any other discussion? That seems to be a little less than that it was before, so maybe we're.
They're doing a really good job of trying, yeah, I mean, we've been receiving money and such, Shelley does, just as a last ditch effort to say, Pete, please collect this.
Yeah.
So she does send notices out, and she has collected some, so it does help.
Hopefully we're moving forward, uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
And I have no other business until the budget amendment hearing.
Okay. All right, um. Luvan, do you know if Lori's coming down today, or?
She is not.
She's not?
When I put on the agenda, she said that you.
Oh, that's right, I got it, another male said we already did that, correct?
Yep.
We can take her on the list, are you available?
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Calendar for this week. Uh, at noon today, it's a Mississippi Valley workforce. Um, CEO meeting by Zoom for Don, if he chooses to attend that. Um, five o'clock for this afternoon is a conservation board meeting in Firstville, for any of you that want to go to that. At six o'clock, it's a Jackson County Economic Alliance meeting, also for any of you, um. Unless Don, Don might choose to attend by Zoom, I haven't asked him. Wednesday, March twentieth at five PM is an ECA council meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom for Mike. Um, on Thursday, March twenty-first at six PM at the Limestone Bluffs RC and D meeting, by Zoom for Don. Friday, March twenty-second at seven AM is a McCopler Leadership Team Meeting by Zoom for Don. And at noon on that Friday, is the Jackson County Area Tourism Association meeting by Zoom for any of you that want to attend. It's an odd day out for them, but they had to move it because of a funeral, I believe. Monday, March twenty-fifth at nine AM is a PEI meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom for Mike. At four PM is an early childhood Iowa council meeting in DuWitt or by Zoom for NIN. And at six PM that night is a Board of Adjustment meeting for any of you that want to attend that. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, March twenty-sixth at nine AM. And at seven PM that night is a Board of Health meeting for NIN. All the business that I have for you today.
Okay, well, we appreciate that. Keeping us up to date.
Congratulations on your grandson.
Thank you.
Your grandson?
A new grandson arrived yesterday afternoon, so.
Congratulations.
We asked for what.
Everybody's healthy, wealthy, and wise, huh?
Everybody's doing great. We asked about a name, and they said they hadn't get around to that yet, so it's Baby G at this point.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wish everybody the best. So, um. Public hearing scheduled at ten. I guess we will take a recess until then.
All right.
We will reconvene at this time, and we will open the public hearing. For the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget amendment. Um, any comments or? Questions, um Shelley is with us, and if you just want to briefly explain Shelley to us.
Um, the amendment is for in- increasing our expense or our revenues by three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred. Or. A virtual training grant and the Ashley Hansen Grant, which we all knew we had, but it wasn't in the budget, so. Um, and then the expenses, um. Were increasing the opioid dollars, um, just so that we can actually spend it. Um, increasing um internet expenses. Um, for Bjorn's office, um. Insurance for the fairgrounds, and together we build, um, and then getting our. Jail construction budget, so that we can spend, hopefully get most of that all spent for this year. So that's, that's the large portion of that, most of that is, um, it's. Including, it's one million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, eighty dollars, that I've amended the jail construction. Um, expense budget for. And that's a total of one million, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and five dollars. So most of that. The largest majority of that is coming out of ARPA firms and the jail bond bonds.
And, uh, well, yeah, there's a minimal amount coming from opioid settlement.
Yeah.
That, you know.
Yeah.
Again, there, we. Had a good meeting, I think, at the state level, so there's some things I have notes in that I'd like to take to public health and to. Julie and, and see if something we can employ in also, so. Yeah, um, any other questions on the budget amendment?
So moved.
Uh, is that to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion at the second to close the public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
So with the closing of the public hearing, I need a motion to approve resolution number one zero two zero. Dash zero three dash nineteen dash twenty twenty-four, for the amendment to the county budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And authorized chair and auditor signatures on the record of hearings and certified to the state of Iowa. So moved.
Second.
Motion second to approve resolution one zero two zero dash zero three dash one nine dash twenty twenty-four. As presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Um, and just as a side note, since Shelley is sitting in the chair, and I know that Don, you are, and. I just want everybody to know that Shelley and I worked all weekend, and that we have met the requirement. Well, at least our portion of the requirement with all of these mailing that we need to do, um, yeah. It was a little bit of a struggle, I'm not gonna lie to you, there's a little bit of a frustration factor, but it did get done. We have sent them off to the printers, and hopefully that they will, um. Have these notices out by tomorrow, so everybody can expect to see the mailings in your mailbox.
So I didn't see the publication in the newspaper, um. Uh, yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it was in the newspaper, and I didn't receive any comments or, uh, any of the sort, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'm sure the mailing will produce some of that.
Well, I don't, on the thirteenth, I even talked about it on KMAQ, and I have not heard any feedback from that either. Um, I've addressed how the mailings are confusing, um, and that consensus runs through the uh, through the courthouse as much as. Uh, at the diners or wherever, it's just, it's hard to understand what their, the, the thought process and what they actually say, so. Um, the confusion.
Well, uh, obviously, uh, I mean, it does look like there's a reduction, and there, that basically is a reduction, but again, it goes back to the rollback and. Whatever it consists of, it's confusing.
Very confusing.
So, um, there is a highlighted portion on your agenda, is that off or on?
Uh, that's, that's not now, it'll be with John.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so. We're finished with budget amendments?
Yes.
Uh, we're down to Mr. John Hanson and Jeremy, I do not see, but. John Hanson is here with Midwest Construction Consultant, uh, for a report, if you will, on the Law Center. And the Extension Building. And for pay applications, good morning, John.
I don't have any.
Okay, well, we can scratch that part off.
Uh, just the update on, uh. Well, you kind of know where you're at, a Jackson County Fairgrounds, so we do have an occupancy permit. Uh, the thing they're lacking is the kitchen equipment came in, so they got their closets and stuff on. And uh plumber is waiting for countertops going, cause uh, they just received the countertops. Cause they didn't get the color selection made, but anyways, uh. The punch list was done last Wednesday, I'm waiting for our text punch list, so that we can get that completed. Uh, but, uh, other than that, the project's pretty well ready to go, and, uh. I guess, are there any questions on that aspect of it, yeah?
Did we figure out the key thing last night?
No, I, I, I gotta go back through the key schedule.
Are you gonna bring the keys to us?
No, no, yeah.
So will you have them all labeled as far as which doors they go to?
That's what I'm trying to do. That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay, alright, yes, and then what else do we need? So what else do we need from you for insurance purposes? I mean, you, we, you sent me the occupancy rating, do we need anything else?
I sent you occupancy, state occupancy permit, the two final electric state electrical inspection approvals. And, uh, certification of the range hood.
Good.
And one of those, oh, fire sprinkler flow reports.
Okay, alright.
Uh, everything's been tested out in Fire Marshal there and everything was smoked, so.
Good. Uh, forward that to the insurance company.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I received the M E P punch list, I'm just waiting for the architectural one. Cause I wanna go over that and make sure that they have everything picked up. But when the keys, keys get distributed and. Uh, I'm just trying to figure out.
You're gonna bring me all the keys, they won't be distributed, we'll get all of the keys?
Do you want all the keys?
Uh-huh, I do.
Well, they have to be distributed and marked down who gets a key and who has them, what number and. We went through this before and all of a sudden, we've got a pocket full of keys that we don't know where at. Somebody else is making keys for a building and we don't know who has keys to the building.
We will, we will definitely, we will stamp them.
There's.
But they're not, they're stamped.
They're stamped and numbered, but. When I was looking, I just saw the keys and I brought and grabbed them. And noticed that there is thirty master keys and there's supposed to be some individual keys. And there's numbers stamped on, but I haven't made heads or tails of it yet, so. I got a few irons in the fire with this dang law center, so.
Yeah, no, let's, uh.
So is that the wishes of the board that all of the keys come here?
I would say to be distributed, yes.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'll just bring them all, but I wanna get them.
Yeah.
Labelled, so you know what you got. Get some key tags on and stuff, so we know what the hell we're doing.
Yeah.
That way, we got a count on the keys.
Yes.
Total count on the keys and then when we distribute them, we can write down who distributed them.
Correct.
Yeah.
Cause I thought thirty master keys, that's a lot.
Sounds like a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move over to the Law Center, how's that going?
Well, yeah. Well, you are aware that Jeremy is no longer.
I am not aware of that.
Okay. Uh. Basically, I've, I told Jeremy he likes where he's living out at Rogers. His family's in Davenport, he's been moving around for twelve years with me. And, uh, he's still involved in the project, of course, cause we're still living out there, but. Uh, I'm gonna do two more projects and I'm probably gonna call it quits up there, you know, so it'll be two years, I'll be. Seventy years old, so. Uh, Jeremy is, I, I asked him if he wanted to take a job, you know. To look around and he took a job with Bruce Builders, so you have a new resident of, uh, Macoke to Iowa. But, uh, I'll be on site full time now, I know that's scary, but, uh. Well, I just wanted you to be aware of the situation.
We know where to go ahead, Hunter, and I don't.
So, no. Jeremy's been moving around twelve years, he's awesome and, uh.
So he is settling here?
Yeah, he's staying, yep. He's gonna stay in Macoke to.
No, I know he likes to do some fishing, you know, he has been over to Bellevue and, and whatnot, but yeah.
And his mom and family are in Davenport.
Yeah, nice.
So he's gonna stay here and not move around anymore.
Okay.
So he needs a nice girl to settle down with. So anyways, right now, uh, we have the front. Uh, admin sections shut down totally. So I don't want anybody in the building because they're doing the epoxy floors.
Thanks.
Floors, everybody.
They're not doing any floors.
Locked up, so. Anyways, they, they should have the epoxy floors done by Thursday. And then we're gonna move them up to the mezzanine levels of the, the new mezzanine levels that we're putting in. Uh, now we're working with the steel, we got steel stairs and stuff. But that full-size railing just doing like. Terrible, and that's one of the things Jeremy volunteered me for, so to help with that. So we're, we're having a few problems. They're, they just weigh so much, so. Uh, anyways, we're getting it figured out, we'll get the. Stairs and railing up, we're gonna leave one section out, so we can lift the bunks. And the toilets up there after the epoxy floors are finished up there. So, cause they're so heavy and they're hard to get up the stairs. Almost impossible, so anyways, we hope to have that done here in the next two weeks. Uh, duct work, they're finishing up their final duct work connections in the mechanical chases. And hope to have that done in three weeks. Uh, detention equipment contractor's on site. He's starting the window install over there and they're gonna be installing locks. Key vinyl will start Thursday of this week. Uh, a lot of it's been laid, but they need to finish. And then, uh, we'll do the carpet and the admin next week. So as we get the, I'd like to do the punch list up there in admin first.
Mm-hmm.
Cause I talked to Don and. You know, we wanna get some of that equipment out of the storage.
Yeah.
Uh, some of the furniture.
Well, we need to get it out and sort it out and see what's available.
Available and what we need.
I know when it was put in there, it was a little hectic, so.
I, I figured rather than move it into the storage shed, we could move it into place. In the admin, I mean, once punch list done, then we can move. Right, you know, start equipping it, not occupy the facility, but at least start getting set up.
Right, so either we could use, uh, the building or the. Um. Carport somehow, maybe to set things out and take a look and see.
Yeah, or we can set them outside and determine what we're taking over and take them over a little time. As we get it cleared out, we can move it around, store it somewhere.
Sure.
So I'd just rather not move stuff two, three times, but on the other hand. They'll allow us, you know, Bjorn to start setting up stuff. S E I called them off this week. They're finally coming back in, but they'll be there next week.
Did the, is that, is that for the internet cables and stuff that we had to add? Did those holes get bored that needed to be drilled?
Well, they get drilled too, but I got pathways for them to get in.
No, that's. That's the, they were back a while ago and they said, we don't drill holes and they left, if I'm not mistaken, so we need to make sure. We have whatever they need available, Jeremy was gonna do that, he was kinda frustrated with them. And he, he said he was gonna drill the whatever, drill the hole where it needed to be, so. We need to make sure that's done.
What they doing in the courthouse? They have you drill holes or what? I mean, it's just, you know, damn it, if they did the job, they shouldn't drill the holes, but. I'll get them through there one way or another. I mean. If there's no contractors, why do their jobs, I guess, anymore? Uh. Electrical is continuing. Uh, security electronics, they're wanting to start in April and get it set up. So. That's where we're at currently, we've got a lot of activity on and it's just kinda crazy over there.
Is the stairwells in yet, or?
Stairwells are in, but, uh. We're fighting that fencing, the railings in, is their full height. About fifteen, eighteen hundred pounds apiece. And so we're, we're, we're still.
And they're half inch long?
And that without. Trying not to get seriously killed, and so anyways, uh.
We have some black tackles and a fork left and.
Oh, we got a miniature crane in there and everything else, so it's exciting. But the stairs are in. And we're just finishing up that, but I want the. Fencing up first, so we can leave one section out, get the epoxy done. And then we'll come back in and put the last piece in. So we're just working on the learning curve right now. Any other questions in regards to that, or?
When's the epoxy done that you can put people on it?
Uh, they'll be done. Thursday, I don't want anybody on it till Friday, I'd prefer not to have anybody on it till Monday.
Well, then nobody's on it till Monday.
Yeah. I mean, I did warn them Thursday, I don't wanna go down that path, so. It would be better if we let it cure out over the weekend. In my opinion, so.
Yeah.
And then, John, I had said something to Jeremy about it, Delbert Longley, the jail inspector's gonna be here, wants to see the new jail tomorrow. Um, are there parts of it he's gonna be able to get into at least see, or what's that, uh?
Yeah, he'll be able to get into the jail section, he. That's what he probably prefers to see.
Right, okay, so he can get into that part, just fine.
Oh, yeah, it's just the admin he wouldn't be able to get into and, uh. He really has no jurisdiction over that section, so.
Okay, so there's no epoxy you gotta worry about, cause he's gonna be here tomorrow to do a jail inspection and actually.
Oh, no, there's no, no, the only thing that. No, there's no epoxy or anything in jail portion. So I'll be able to get through the whole jail, you just can't get from booking to admin.
Okay. And then, are you available tomorrow for, uh, when he's here, or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm available, yeah.
So I'm working on, I'll try to get a schedule locked down with him and the board's welcome to. Come to anything too, so we'll.
Also, maybe send us a. Email us something if you know when he's gonna be or something.
Yep.
Unfortunately, I won't be able to make it.
Come on, Don, drive back.
Okay, any other questions for John?
Yeah, we have, uh. I sent out a contract of purchase, we talked about the kitchen equipment.
Mm-hmm.
We're able to keep it in line with that and, uh, move some things around as far as that. But yeah, we have a contract that, uh, I had, uh, put together.
So this is the same email we got yesterday, correct, on the equipment, uh, the list and, uh, yeah.
So I sent you the contract.
Right.
So last night, I did send you the contract, so you can see exactly what this money is for.
Right.
Um, and then. If you're ready, I do, I'm ready for a motion.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I would ask, uh, a motion to approve. The chair signature on the Rapids Wholesale Food Service Equipment Contract. For sixty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-two cents for kitchen equipment at the Jackson County Law Enforcement Center. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve. Uh, and have the chair signature on the Rapids Wholesale Food Service Equipment. Contract for sixty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-two cents. For the kitchen equipment. At the J C. Law Center. Um, any further discussion? Again, there was a list of equipment and pictures and whatnot and. Um, that we seen and that was, I suspect that it's all pretty common. stainless steel stuff that goes along with the. A facility of that nature.
That's correct.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
And then we probably need to approve the. First. Uh, invoice for the half of it, or?
So.
Or does that get approved next week?
We're going to submit that for next week and we'll add it to the. We'll add it to the pay apps for March, but we will get paid next week if that's okay.
Yeah.
He wanted paid today and I was like, no.
No. The, the, I just want to explain it to them, or in case I'm not here next week, uh. Which I probably won't be, but, uh. They're working with manufacturers, so they have to submit. Part of the payment for the manufacturer produces the equipment, so they usually charge half. And then before the manufacturer will ship them, they gotta pay the other end, so. Uh, we'll see the first invoices for half. For the deposit to get to the manufacturers, so you'll see that invoice next week.
Yep.
And then we'll add it to the regular pay application. So that we can track it, so.
Okay, any other questions for John?
I will get Mike's signature and I will email this to Hunter today.
Okay, that'd be awesome.
Do you wanna, you see, save it?
Yes. Cause then I can put it in all the final documents.
Yeah.
That way, you know, I've tried to collect all the final documents, so we have them electronic click.
Yeah.
Because, uh.
We have a lot of emailing back and forth between John and I, um, progress reports and, yeah. Was that done today?
Yep.
Okay.
You guys good? Yes. You all right?
Appreciate.
Thanks, John.
Good job. And thanks, John, talk to you later.
Okay, um.
I just got.
Brad, is Ja- uh, Jack or Lynn out the home? Actually, there are work sessions anyway, correct?
Yes. With Jack and Lynn?
Yeah.
Well, it's an update.
Yeah. And Jeff is a work session, is that correct? Jeff and Rob, Bobby, I think.
Do you want a recess?
We'll take a short recess at this time.
Yeah, we're trying to call Jack, Lynn's light is on.
Convene. We will reconvene at this time and we're joined, uh, Lynn Vopes, our Jackson County Disability Coordinator. Uh, Disability Services and Mr. Jack Willie, anybody know Jack? So appreciate it, uh, they're here to give us an update and, uh, all good news, I'm sure.
I'm sure it is. I'll let you make your own judgment, what do you think? So we are here to just review the mental health region's governing board meeting yesterday, which Nin attended virtually and then Jack and I were there as well, so. Um, David Farmer, the region's fiscal agent, just reviewed financial information, we're currently. On track to have an ending fund balance of probably around fifteen percent or so. Um, that would be if we spend a hundred percent of our budget, but I. He did a little deeper dive, I think, into our expenditure history and the expenses are. Aren't pretty much meeting what's budgeted, so he is anticipating we'll be closer to, um. Our expenses equalling our budgeted amount. Now, keep in mind that the fund balance limit set by legislation is five percent, and so. Um, that, of course, raises a question of how much carryover will there be in fiscal year F Y twenty-five? Um. So that was about, I think, the gist of the financial report.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
The board reviewed the proposed F Y twenty-five budget. This is the last. Budget that will be prepared and approved by this governing board in light of anticipated. Um, H H S alignment, Health and Human Services alignment. So. Originally, a budget had been prepared to match our anticipated revenue. In F Y twenty-five from the state, which is twelve point six million. The governing board had a work session on March seventh and had. Quite a lot of discussion about. Budgeting to that amount, the proposed budget at that meeting given to the board. Um, had obviously made some reductions in expenditures for the current fiscal year. The current fiscal year's budget is about, um, sixteen million. And, uh, prior to this meeting, the information went out to a lot of the stakeholders, a lot of the providers. So at this meeting, there were several people there who spoke. In regards to some of the recommended reductions that were included in that proposed budget to the board. Namely, the impact on Jackson County was concerned about some induction to. Funding for the co-responder model, so this is that model that. Uh, funds a person to ride along with law enforcement, to deescalate mental health crises, to intervene, to assist with people, follow up with people. That have frequent contact or contact of some of the crisis with law enforcement. I will say that Jackson County was well represented in that regard, um, the Kokota Police Assistant Police Chief. Uh, J T Thompson was there, the school resource officer, James Tenney was there, the sheriff, Brent Pilberg was there. And then also the person who currently is in that co-responder position, Brianna was there. And they all had an opportunity to speak to the governing board. About the value that they all find in that program. Also, there are a couple of, uh, people representing Clinton County. Sheriff's Office and then the Muscatine Police Department.
Right.
So there was a lot of support and that support really, quite honestly. Uh, was all rounded up from, you know, within about two days, from Tuesday until this meeting was on Thursday afternoon, they really rallied the troops. We also had a school administrator from within our county that called. Jim Irwin, she knows Jim Irwin personally, so. Jim Irwin, she knows Jim Irwin personally, so she spoke to Jim on behalf of being on the governing board. So it's a, it was very publicly apparent that that is a particular program that law enforcement is really embracing and. Um, sees a value.
Well, and that's certainly where I think that we should proceed with some of that is if there is a value into this that's working, obviously, to help in our locals. That's, that's what I'd like.
And it has been a very successful program. And I think, I don't think anybody really on the governing board wanted to see it go away. So we basically said that when she redid the budget for our meeting yesterday. That some dollars should be allocated to that coresponders.
So I really don't know. I mean, that works right into the behavioral health, whatever, to me, you know, that's where that should be almost, but uh.
Yes, I'm not sure the co-responder, it's, it's not a required service, so we hope it weaves into. The behavioral health district, you're right, that they see the value of it continuing.
And we really did talk to them about, you know, this is the last budget, if they want that to continue. Into future years, they're gonna really have to lobby for it with HHS.
Right, mm-hmm, which I think they will.
I think they will too.
Yeah.
As strongly as they felt about it at our meeting, it was pretty obvious that it's something that they want to have continued.
Right.
Into the future.
Yeah. So the governing board, even prior to those um public statements, had a lot of conversation and they were comfortable. David was not able to be there, but they were comfortable with increasing the amount of the budget that they were, would consider approving above. The amount of revenue that we anticipate. Lori had presented information about the history of how much, what's the percentage of the budget that typically is spent. Each fiscal year and it hovers around seventy five to eighty five percent, it's really on the high end. So the governing board had already made a determination that they were comfortable. To increase above fifteen percent above what our anticipated revenue is. Because that would then match what our expenditures generally are. So the budget that was presented yesterday to the governing board, we did go back to the table, we um. Reinstated the full amount of the dollar amount currently for co-responder. And it put some other expenses back in the budget. The budget that was approved yesterday was fourteen point nine million. Um, and everybody, I felt after some additional conversation yesterday, was comfortable with that.
Absolutely.
So that's the region?
This is the mental health region for fiscal year twenty five.
We don't know that that's gonna stay the same yet, no?
Well, yes.
Five, it will.
Twenty five, well.
Until the next budget process.
One year, yeah. That's why this was the last.
July to June.
Have you heard anything new in legislation as far as?
They're supposed to be, we heard they're going to be debating it this week.
Yeah, I read the.
Like out there last. But Dr. Garcia had her big talk at one of the. Conferences last week that we were out in Des Moines and. She kind of really talked about, and I think Lori or somebody yesterday talked about, like, you can kind of go outside your region to. Seek help, but it's like, okay, some of that isn't, issue is the regions are too big, so if you're going outside, it may be. You know, hopefully you're going to somebody closer because I see that as a major loophole in the whole thing.
Well, and we've heard that Director Garcia, the HHS director, has said that before, and I guess I. Julie Tishuk, my counterpart from Cedar County, commented yesterday, that's already occurring, for example.
She did kind of say that.
Okay, good.
People, I think initially, when they talked about revamping these, I think they thought they were gonna be hard walls.
Oh, sure.
And she's kind of reassuring that they're not hard walls. She did comment a little bit on how people aren't spending their budget, you know, type of deal and. Couple people did speak up and say it's not that people don't, regions don't want to, it's that they can't find the services.
There's not the people.
Control the program.
They don't have the, the, the manpower to do it.
Providers, so.
Right, because in the past, as we've told you before, we've okayed programs, but there's no money to, to um supply the product.
But you can't implement and sustain it, there's no reason to. Attempt it, I guess, I mean, do you can't?
No, and, and as a provider, you know, the, the ground isn't stable under our feet right now because the sand is still shifting, if you will. Until we hear what the comments are and when it's, when it's discussed at the legislature and. We're not really gonna know, and if I'm a provider and I'm gonna put my neck out there and say I'm gonna start a new service or increase the service. When I don't really know what the sentiment is coming from the state, I. Why would anybody, you know, at this particular point in this discussion?
Make a commitment to that.
Yeah.
So honestly, you know, I think they are trying to probably make it better or serviceable, you know, and.
Yeah, there seemed to be some. Comments that people had heard that were mentioned yesterday about, you know, the, the map is still out there. Seven districts, but our five counties remain one of the seven. Um.
And that was basically because. From what conversation I've had at HHS is that we're doing what we're supposed to do. We're providing the services we're supposed to provide.
So they let us alone?
Huh?
So they let us alone?
Well, they didn't add anybody to it or subtract anybody from us, so.
Right.
Right.
Yep, and.
And I didn't know there was a population in there somehow, somewhere or not, but I, I did.
Don't think population.
Population did, but when, way back, when they were first starting to. When they were first starting to discuss this, Lori's kind of seemed, we might be okay, because we're about three hundred and twenty five thousand people. And she said, she thought we would be safe, but, and thank God we were.
Well, so far, I mean.
Well, if you're a pilot program and it's working, it's something they need to look at also, you know.
And that seems to be what, what's being said. Um, and you know, it's, it's true in the adult system, but I think a lot of that credit also goes to Christine from the children's.
Oh, absolutely.
She's very visionary in what she's doing, and she spoke a little bit yesterday about what she's calling the hub, which is kind of that no wrong door, you know. Families with, with difficulties will have one place to call and at that. Point, there should be somebody in response to that call, being able to tell them what's available and what direction they might want to look for.
I like that concept. I like that idea because a lot of times that's, that's the main focus that they need is. They don't know where to go. They just need a number, a door they can enter.
Mm-hmm.
That then can funnel them to the right people versus. You know, you can call someplace and, oh, sorry, we don't handle that, that whole theory of not my job.
Right, right, yeah.
That ain't what them people need at that point.
No, that's right, not at all. Um, so Lori made a couple of, of mentions of things related to the redesign. She feels that the districts will be decided um by August. She seemed to have a sense that within the first couple of months of next fiscal year, hopefully at least the districts will be defined. Uh, she felt that ASOs, that Administrative Services Organization, that they will be designated by December thirty first at the latest.
And she said the contracts, was it October? That proposed contracts would be available?
I think she was even thinking a little bit earlier this fall and so that they might be due back by the, the, your, it's a bidding process, and so the bids would be due maybe like by October. Um, in order to get them identified by the end of the calendar year. Uh, she talked a little bit about who can apply to become this ASO and. The board talked with Lori's initiation of the conversation, kind of, that, yes, the current mental health region. Is a government entity, government entities can apply to be an ASO. And the sense was that there is some expectation on the part of HHS at the state level. That why, why wouldn't regions apply to be that entity? Uh, I think Lori felt it would take maybe a um twenty eighty agreement between the five counties to be identified as that kind of an organization. So the board will have more conversation on that, I would say, in the probably the next couple of months.
I would say that that's a, a, something that the board is really interested in looking at.
Mm-hmm.
Creating an ASO for our region and, and applying for it.
Yeah.
Well, I think that'd be a huge benefit for it, yeah.
Mm-hmm. I, you know, one of the things, so the other thing that was discussed was that it, it should go up in front of the legislature this week, hopefully. And that Director Garcia apparently said to the group Lori was in, that they're even still working on writing the bill, which would be the discussion. The one thing in the recent amendments that was not addressed was that whole seven percent administrative cap. Which I think is of real concern. Even if, say, the five counties, as we are familiar with each other now, if we look at our administrative cost. We're well above that right now, however, one of the things that should help. Is if Iowa is selected. As one of ten states at the federal level, out of twenty five states that are applying to be. Certified as a demonstration program for the certified community behavioral health clinics or CCBHCs. Because some of the services that are covered by administrative cost and staff. Will be provided through that CCBHC contracting, so, um. But that is about all the information. I would say I felt that Lori shared yesterday, and I don't know, Lynn, if you or Mike heard anything further in Des Moines. That would give us some.
I mean, what she kind of talked about was kind of pretty much, you know, we're setting it on the same meeting, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so. Um, I would say that was kind of the highlight, just the highlights of the meeting.
Absolutely. The main thrust was on the budget and what we were gonna do to, for the future.
So I don't know. Any questions, any additional thoughts you had, Lynn, Lynn in the meeting yesterday? There you go, that's March.
Well, we appreciate it again, you know, I, I know it's always most tank consuming, but it's also.
Well, it's.
Mind-boggling sometimes.
It's really concerning.
Yeah.
It really is. Because I said to Lynn when I went over to pick up my packets so I can review it before the meeting, says, one of my biggest concerns is. For the people in Jackson County that need services, if there isn't a Lynn Bopes. Or somebody in that role, how are they gonna know where to go?
Right.
Hopefully the hub will help it.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and then, like I said, you know, I mean, obviously, Lynn decides to step down and then uh we've kind of tried to hire. You know, we've talked about that, can we hire for when we don't know the future?
Yeah, and you don't know what the job description would be.
Over a year, yeah, so.
So there's a lot of.
Well, we keep working through it and obviously, the people that are making decisions also have loved ones and family and friends that are. In these positions also, so that I'm certainly gonna take that into consideration and uh do the best thing they can, I hope.
Yeah, that's.
What we have to work for.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thanks.
Thank you.
For coming in, guys.
Yep, you bet.
When will I see you next?
Hey, 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 question. Um. What do you think about the lighting in here?
Looks good.
Looks good, you like it?
Looks nice and bright.
It is nice and bright. Actually, we just got. It's kind of.
Makes it easier.
We're trying our new LEDs and uh trying to improve the courthouse lighting and. Looks good. I was over to the engineers office, he said, yeah, you could change all the yellow ones sometimes.
That's what I said, the ones that were back from when I was a kinder.
Right, yeah.
We appreciate it.
Yeah. Take care.
See ya.
Okay, any other, um. Reports from any other boards? I guess I had a way to sort it yesterday and they did. Um. Hire a new uh person, that person for the truck driving position, uh. So much mechanic also has a lot of background, mechanical work and uh very well qualified, so they're really, really happy, hopefully they can keep it for. A period of time, uh, so. They're happy about that, still waiting on their truck, of course, and. Um, I think the rates will go up slightly per ton out there, like anything else, but. Yeah, I think the minimum was. Yeah, I don't even know what it is a ton. I think seven fifty is the minimum.
No, he might.
Yeah. So, anyway, uh, I don't know if I have any other reports, have some, have some notes I need to go over yet for the state meetings, uh, when. When they come out with the uh. The programs will all be available online and I would like to maybe have public help and. Newly sit in on the opioid one, that was kind of interesting, I thought, and different ideas. That know strip testing and stuff like that, you know, but. To maybe catch some of this stuff before somebody has an issue. Anyway, anything else before the board?
I'm not, we had a Together Rebuild meeting, we're working, moving forward, trying to get leases done, insurance done. Um, still having to move a few meetings till we can get everything wrapped up and hopefully people are. Being patient with everything, the process of getting it all done and. Moving forward there.
Any further business before the board? If not, take a moment to adjourn. I think he's coming. Yeah, work session. Taking a short recess at this time.
Yeah.
We will reconvene at this time and uh Mr. Jeff Kilburg, our Granite County Maintenance Director. Uh, Maintenance Supervisor, Maintenance, what's your, what's the title? Facilities Manager. All right, is, it was Bobby Wile today too, or no, or?
He's coming.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, we're just looking for an update and maybe have some questions, so.
Yeah.
Haven't seen you for a little while.
So I'm gonna start with the care facility. I got all kinds of, I might jump all over the place, so if you guys have any questions, stop me. So just to kind of recap, uh, that pump that they replaced maybe a month or so ago. There's two valves on each side of that that are stuck tight. I mean, that's something that we'd have to get somebody in to fix. For now, it's fine, but if you ever wanted to work on that thing.
Couldn't shut them off.
Can shut them off, you know, you'd have to shut the whole system down, you know, if it's the middle of winter, the middle of summer, when that happened, would be ideal. So just something to kind of think about.
So, just so we don't bypass that, I would say look into it and see what we need to get that fixed.
Okay.
And I mean, is that like a Joel Wood thing, you mean, something?
I, I would guess it'd be more of a. And probably not Joel Wood.
Service one.
I don't know if service one's interested in doing it anymore.
And who did you call the last time?
Well, that's who did our last.
Okay.
They, but he said he didn't think that he had the staffing to do that anymore, so I don't know, I mean, I think uh some of his people went to uh. All Seasons, I could try them, might find somebody. It's a, it's a big, you know, it's a big battle.
We have a fair amount of locals that work for All Seasons, I know, um. But, yeah, no, I mean, we'll have to, you'll have to figure out where we need to go with that and maybe Jared has somebody too, I don't know.
Yeah. He was, I mean, he was talking service one, so.
Yeah, so I, I would say, because it needs to be done, so if we run into a situation. That it needs to be shut down and we can't, then we have an issue.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Looking, I mean, I would look into doing that.
Yep, the generator out there. Um, so I think, I think it's up and running now, Jared was gonna check on it today, but I think that thing is, is working now.
So the battery situation was, they failed and they were fairly new that they were under warranty, as I understand it?
Yep, yep, so I think they put new batteries in, I think it's supposed to come on today at a certain time or whatever, so.
Yeah, well, they have operational.
Yeah.
I mean, you'll know it when it comes on.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess I'm gonna, that one will stop you, but that thermostat thing here a while back, we got an invoice for, I mean, that was pretty minimal piece. But the labor was, I thought was. Enough, I don't know what that was.
So I mean, I mean, according to Jared, that was something that was done before I started.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I don't really know too much about that or what, I don't even know what, what they did.
Yeah.
So.
No, I told him in the future, just to make sure he touches base with you.
Yeah.
Something you can handle.
And if not, that's fine too, I just.
Yeah.
And I don't, you know, they, Meyer's been good to us, he comes out and we need service and.
Yeah.
Because here's the other side of that, it is um first day of spring and the river is open, so he spends a lot of time on the river.
Yeah.
Um, fixing barge equipment in the summertime now, so he's hard to get.
Yep. Well, I mean, I think that thing, you know, I'll know later today more about that, if it's, if it's up. I talked to Schneider, he's still. I talked to Schneider. He's still shooting for an April start on that. Flooring in the hallways or whatever. So that's, that's where that's at. Um, floor scrubber out there, I mean, I guess. It needs batteries for sure. I'm not sure if that's gonna solve the problem that it's not running. Looks like somebody used it for stripping floors with actual floor stripper. So that gets kind of gummy. Sometimes that's hard on those machines. So I don't know, I mean, the batteries, you're probably talking. Five hundred bucks for a couple batteries for that thing and then it still might not work.
Like it's a rechargeable thing or something?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and what are we talking about? A unit?
Is that our responsibility?
Um, you know, so I guess it, it is a point to. I don't say it's our responsibility, but if we put in a new floor, somehow I want to keep it maintained, so either they're gonna mop it or they're gonna do. Yeah, I guess that's a question to be had with them. I mean, as far as maintaining it.
Yeah, I did talk to Jared. I said, when, when this floor gets put in, I think it needs to be scrubbed at least once a week, you know, and maybe more as needed, so. I think that part of it, he's okay with, you know, he's like, yep, whatever we need to do, we'll do it, but we just would like to get this floor scrubber ready. I don't know, somewhere along the line, I think somebody said it's our floor scrubber, but I don't know if that makes a difference as far as who. Puts the batteries in and who.
So how old do you think it is?
I bet it's probably ten, fifteen years old.
Is this a hand one or a?
It's a walk behind, yeah.
It's like something we have here?
Called a boost machine. We don't have one here, no. The one we have here is a one that get ride on it. It's a different brand. The one we have here is a Windsor. I think that's a. It's called a boost machine, I'm not sure.
So is it something minimal out there? Like how many hallways do we do? All the hallways? Do they use the same type of scrubber or is this?
Just doing two hallways.
We don't use the whole building, that's the thing.
Right.
So do they use it to like do like the kitchen or the dining room area?
Yeah, 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 anything, you know, any, in that other common space, I don't know what it is down the end of the hallway, like a, maybe an exercise area or I'm not sure what that is.
Well, there's a, I mean, yeah, I mean, yeah, I call it a common area, you know.
Yeah.
Whatever.
But I mean, any of those spaces you can, you can use that.
That's it.
It would save time, it would be, you know, the other thing, you're not having wet, wet water down, people will suffer.
Do we have any kind of race tag on something like that?
I, I don't.
Okay. We, we need to, um, have a conversation as far as who's, who's baby. And I, I, we're gonna need to say, no, what kind of. It's one of them things, we're not out there every day. We, and I want to know it's getting used and you want to know that it's getting maintained. You know, I don't know what it is to maintain them. If you gotta clean, clean the scrubbers or if you need to.
That's all you gotta do basically.
Yeah, I mean, but like you say, if it was getting used for wax and now it's all gummy and we gotta buy new pads and buy new batteries and then it don't work.
Yeah.
So you know who we bought it from?
I, um, I think it came from, uh, East of Beal Mary. That's.
Would they give us an indication?
I shouldn't say that. It might have come from Weber paper, cause they handle that brand.
Depending on how big a one, just quickly looking online, you can go from four thousand to twelve.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought around, I thought around five.
I was gonna guess somewhere in there. So would you think like Weber or something that would give the indication where they think it's. Preparable or of any value or?
They're gonna wanna take it in and be pretty expensive to.
Yeah.
You know. And if we don't have anything that we could take batteries out of that, I could just even try it. That would be nice if I could have something that I could just pull some batteries out and try it.
They're gonna spend a thousand dollars on batteries. You might as well spend two more and give it. New one.
Well, let's do some investigating and see what they think.
Big, they probably don't need a great big one.
I guess we need to see if you think either Weber paper or Beal Mary, we can, we can see if we paid for it. I guess that would be my first. Right?
Yeah, and I have to look into the lease and say if that's part of the maintenance or what, you know, what it may be. If it's more convenience for them to take care of the floor. Maybe they would buy one and take care of the floor. You know, unless they have somebody scrubbing. How are we gonna know if somebody scrubs it? That's the other thing. We're not there there daily and we're not. I mean, they've worked well with us in the past, but.
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah, we don't really have any accountability that way, but. You know.
Let's see what the supplier thinks about the machine itself and what.
Okay.
Their thoughts are.
Maybe I'll try and pull the batteries out, bring them back here, put some water in, at least I've got enough charge in to try it.
Are they like a big tractor?
It, no, it's just like a, they're like deep cycle batteries, like what you'd have in a boat, you know.
Yeah.
Decent size, but that's all they are, is deep cycle battery.
And the charger that we have is still functional, I suppose?
It, I mean, the charger for the machine is right on the machine.
Oh, it is.
Yeah. So, but I thought if I brought it back here and put it on an actual battery charger, charge them separate, you know, might be able to get.
Probably left one up there. There ain't one in our bill.
Honestly, there could be.
But I know, like, I think they just.
Yeah, check into that once, Sarah, okay? Okay. How you doing Bobby?
Good. So you want me to keep running down my list of stuff?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so I'm gonna talk about treasurer's office a little bit now. You know, we talked about putting glass in that front end, making it more permanent. Now, getting rid of the. Plexiglass equipment, kind of like what the recorder has. So the low price that came in on that was just short of three thousand dollars, twenty-nine forty-four.
Is that the glass or is that the framework also or what?
The whole thing, the frame, the labor, the glass, everything. Leaves a spot to pass underneath, leaves a spot up top that, you know, hopefully the.
Voice will carry over.
Yes, yeah, so that they can hear better inside. So that's my next thing. Um, next on my list, I got courtroom carpet. So we talked about this and asked a little bit about maybe doing the jury room and the judges' chambers. Judges' chambers getting new furniture. I think, I think they're getting new furniture just about everywhere up there, it sounds. But the floor going into the judges' chamber is pretty worn. The floor in the jury room, you know, I mean, it's. Sometimes it gets hooked with the vacuum cleaner, it's just unravelling or whatever. So the top cost to do both of those rooms.
Is it a trip hatch?
It could be, yeah, you know, I mean, it's possible.
Okay.
I mean. My mind, just about anything's a trip hatch. I mean, it, it's, I mean, it could be, you know, I mean, there's sprays, you know, sticking up.
Yeah.
So. The low price had two kind of broken up in two places. It would be a, a better kind of, uh, carpet square. That was thirty-five hundred seventy-five dollars. A better type of carpet square, thirty-nine seventy-two.
Is that for both?
That's for both rooms. That's the entire cost. Um, he said the only thing that might affect that would be if, you know, there was something unforeseen underneath that, that they had to bring a machine in and scrape up, but he didn't think. That was.
And you got a couple different bids, is that?
I got two bids. I contacted six different people and I only got two bids from six different people.
Hmm.
So, but this was considerably lower than the other bid. Pretty reputable person too, so.
Okay.
Think that, that it wouldn't be a good quality project if it was finished.
Because it's something we'll have to go basically physically take a look at too and.
Yeah. Um, I don't know when that furniture's coming and just if it's gonna happen, it'd be nice to get the floor down, so when the furniture comes, it's, you know. Not having to tear stuff.
Okay, so how did we coordinate with the, with the low bidder as far as. Uh, his time schedule? I mean, I know the last time when we did a couple offices, it was. Um, we had to wait a while.
He made it sound like, you know, he would try and fit it in as best he could, you know, or whatever. I mean, I think it'd be. You know, but it's not gonna be next week or something, but you know, I think within a month or something, he.
When can we find out when the furniture's coming?
I talked to the girls in the clerk record and they weren't sure yet. I, I don't, I'm not even sure it's been ordered for sure yet. They didn't, there's somebody from Clinton County that had emailed me last week. I could reach out to her probably and find out a little bit better. But there's not a lot of furniture in there now. You know, if it's something that, you know, we could take that furniture out, put it back in, would be a huge, huge, you know, burden to do that.
But then we'd have to also work around the court.
Yes, yeah. And I, I told them guys that, you know, I mean, obviously Friday's off limits. There's some other times, you know, have any trials, you know, obviously you won't be able to do it then, but.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not that tight of a timeframe.
Yeah, Friday's kind of a bit, yeah, and then I guess the jury rule that would be different, but, uh.
Yeah.
I know the last guy worked on Saturday, I believe, too. Started on a Friday or something, worked through Saturday. But anyway, okay. Everything you tell us so far is costing money. I want to tell you, I do like some of the improvements here, but we do need a dimmer.
So that's the other thing. I mean, these, I don't know if these guys told you, but they are, uh, selectable. So right now they're on the highest setting. We could drop two settings to, you know, go a little bit dimmer with.
I like the option if you had a switch on.
Yep. I mean, that was the original plan, you know, that's why these two tile are up. Two, so I remembered where the, where the box was and I just would probably run. But my thought was to run a couple switches over there behind Lou's desk and.
They look good. Yeah, they look good. The guy next door with the yellow light team was the one they're coming over there, but.
It's on the list. Um. Okay, so behind the fire station, I don't know if you guys have seen, they're doing some work over there.
Read it on the weekly report.
Okay. Anyway, they're gonna repave the alley. They're wondering if we wanted to do that little patch. Of grass or gravel. I guess it's gravel, you know, if we wanted to do that at the same time. Probably makes sense to do that if.
And that's where we were talking, the, the slip zone at one time, they're kind of a little, we talked about that, yeah.
Yeah, so anyway, I mean, it'd be something that we would do, a couple yards, maybe two, three yards of concrete, probably three hundred bucks to do something like that. The other thing that might play into this is the thought that they might want to, uh, put some curb. Up there, you know, take that wall out and just put a regular curb in there. You know, so that.
You mean where our fence is now?
Yeah, kind of, yeah, that.
So we don't have people jumping out the fence, the wall?
Yeah, so I mean, it'd be a curb rather than, you know, whatever footstep there or whatever, and I, I don't think.
And it wouldn't be slamming.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you think there'd be a drive issue on there, jumping up over the curb and driving it in the?
I don't.
I mean, you're gonna have to landscape that somewhat anyway if you do take that out there.
So here's what my thought was, if, it sounded like the city was willing to do all the work that way. So I was gonna maybe rent a sod cutter, roll the sod up the hill, let them cut it, level it off, and if we had to do a little bit of work with the skid loader. Then just roll the sod back down and then, you know, be a pretty.
Um, I guess I would, yeah, I mean, I think that's logical reason.
Yeah, we might have to put a step in, you know, because we don't want that to be slanted too much.
Right.
So I guess.
I know it's a cut across area for a lot of people or maybe not a lot of people, maybe.
It's gonna get less. It's gonna be less, you know, when the, when the jailers aren't there anymore.
Yeah.
But it is.
You know, that's a potential.
Well, the only thing, if it's a ramp and it's too.
SBA DA.
Then you know, that's a even a bigger problem. I don't think.
Is a step viable because otherwise they go around as far as ADA? Um, is that even a?
I don't think ADA would be a problem there because the parking lot is, you know, so that's not. I don't think that would have to be ADA compliant. I'd be more worried about it being too, too steep. Somebody slipping on that and then saying, well, you guys, you guys poured the cement. And it's just too steep, you know, or whatever, it's not what that. If it's a half a percent grade or whatever that.
Honestly, there.
My thinking is if you brought the curb up. Further than where that wall is. And maybe just do your cement to the curb. They have to, just to step off the curb. Would that get you enough?
I don't know. And that's what, if we could do that, that'd be perfect thing to do, but I don't, it, it's just, I feel like it's gonna be. A little bit high. You know, because they're gonna move it a little bit towards the parking lot in a way to make it wider in the alley. So I mean, the closer you get to the curb, the more that elevation will turn.
So the city's gonna make the alley wider?
What's that?
The city's gonna make the alley wider?
I think they would like it to be just a hair wider.
Well, there ain't much room there, I will say that, but again. Is there a? Who owns it?
If they're going wider, are they going into ours?
I think certainly are. I think I remember right when we talked about this the last time.
I'm sure they would be.
Yeah.
I mean. I don't.
We need another insurance agent.
So here's the other thing though, so that's funny, actually, you know, thinking about this, that, uh. Uh, exercise yard's probably gonna come out.
Yeah.
You know, that makes a whole lot more room coming around that corner there or whatever. But obviously we want to coordinate with the city with what they're doing there also.
Yeah.
Obviously, we, or not obviously, but maybe makes sense to do this. Um. Kind of the alley anyway, for sure, and if.
Yeah.
The, if the, if the curb and the wall makes sense.
I mean, I don't think they're gonna tear into the, the yard, you know, but you know how wide a.
Yeah.
Curve is, it's probably two foot or whatever, you know, I would think that that would be what they're probably looking at gaining, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
Probably less than a yard we'd have to.
I mean.
I mean, I think, um, past concerns were maybe salt and dust and.
I mean, what's there, salt's gonna peel up over top of that anyway, so I mean, I, that's not a very good argument in my mind.
Yeah.
You know. Unless it's a four foot high wall.
Yeah, keep, keep pursuing it, look into it, bring back recommendation for that also, right? We'll take a look at it and, uh.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, it sounded like maybe May would be the earliest that they'd be working on paving that.
So keep us up to date on that.
I will do that. Um, the circulating pump in the basement here, the bearing rag last week, haven't got that put in yet, but. That'd be something that we can get that thing up.
Is it something that's a shutdown for a period?
No, it's not been running since I've been here, so it's something that we're gonna make.
Work.
Yeah.
The circulating pump for?
For the heating and cooling system, so it's, there's two pumps, you know, generally you'd alternate back and forth and. You know, alternating to this and a good bearings of it.
Good.
Um, there's a circuit board up for AC unit that apparently hasn't worked for quite some time. Hopefully get that put in and try and solve that problem. I think you guys talked maybe about the kiosk. And some. Light shining through the windows or whatever, maybe.
These front doors or something, it was brought up.
I think the doors to the north.
Oh, is that what it was?
Yeah. So I think what I'm gonna try to do is get some treatment, some, some kind of film to put on, just the glass on the kiosk.
That's what I wondered if that wouldn't work better.
Because it's pretty expensive to do that other, you know, if we treated that whole window up there, I bet it'd be five thousand dollars.
We talked about taking them windows off.
But anyway, I mean, this is probably.
Yeah.
Twenty-five, thirty dollars worth of stuff and I'm gonna try it.
Worth a try.
Works and doesn't.
On the side of the kiosk.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's what I'm gonna try. Oh, let's see, where am I at here? So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the new jail, some things that we looked at. I had Jayden go over there, Jayden checked them. And they did some elevations and how much slope there is from. Say the parking lot on the east side of the jail, all the way around the, the WIC building. So the elevation is only about a half a percent. This is Jayden's talk or whatever. He said for grass, it should be about two percent. So last week when we had that, whatever half inch of rain, I went, stopped over there on Friday. I mean, there was a path of water, you know, probably three inches deep that was just moving real slow through there. I came back Saturday. And then there was a couple. You know, wet spots like between the, the, uh, solar panels and then. Where's the other? There was another one maybe up farther. Anyway, we were dumping part of that parking lot. Part of the, uh, the downspouts off the jail, there's four downspouts. Then on the backside of that. That WIC building, there's two downspouts there that are actually starting to cut in, you know, there's a little divot. So we kind of. Think the thing to do there, maybe put a couple catch bases in, put a put a pipe in underneath. Behind, under, somewhere around the solar panels. Back to behind that tin shed, there's a manhole.
There is a manhole back there?
It's on, it's on the property side, it's not out the street.
Okay.
But I think it's.
Something you'd else talk to see tomorrow.
Probably, and I think it's on the neighbor's property, I mean, I think the property lines here and the manholes, just a little bit that way. But Jayden said, it's deep enough that you could do all this stuff, so what we kinda came up with, or what we thought would be best. As if there would be a little catch basin up by the. By the parking lot, or or a drain or something to catch some of that water.
The north side or the.
And then another one, like between the solar panels. And then pipe those downspouts into that. All the way around, you know, so it can all go where it should be going. Some water off the hill to, you know.
Okay, so. I guess I gotta think about this a little bit, whose responsibility is that, is this, is this um. Go along with the construction of this and the drainage and the ar- architect and all the way back to whatever?
I mean, I I don't know why you would think that you could put all those downspouts back there with that flat of an area, you know?
I don't know why you'd think you could put a downspout and have it run across the sidewalk in Iowa and have it.
How's that gonna get fixed?
They cut that out.
They cut it, but they haven't taken the cement out, I don't think.
Oh, really?
I think they cut it, but the cement's still there.
So then the water just gonna go into the parking lot, is that the?
Well, that's, that was their solution. Huh? Yeah.
Yeah, if they don't get it underneath, you're always gonna have a nice spot on your sidewalk.
I mean, they should have come down off the building even and did exactly what you're talking about now.
Yeah, I mean, that that would have been, I mean, right now, that's not a very good option with the parking lot there, you know, but it should have been done.
Because they're all cement, like, the T W B building, at least they have that dirt.
Right, yeah.
We're not engineers though.
But Jayden is.
Okay, so I I guess, with that being said. I would get a dollar, I'll get a valid number, because this is gonna either go back to. Um, jail.
Is is there someone that worked on the project locally that, you know, might have a little bit of a?
Dirt work.
Reach out to him, a few other people. It's not gonna be ideal, you know, but.
No, but I, again, we don't need to have, I mean, that was brought up, but there might be a little standing water here, but you know, it's like, yeah, whatever, it's a big deal, well. Maybe it will be a big deal, I, I I know there's a, you can tell visually, see there's a low spot on the. West side of the solar panels.
You just wanna put a koi pond in. With running fresh water, throw it occasionally. Go feed the fish.
I mean, I'm sure there's some things that are already gonna come up, or some more things that are gonna come up, we don't know, I guess, but. Yeah, I mean, I I would check into a little more, even with the city, um, we may be getting a new neighbor there anyway, the way it sounds. Um, I don't think that would be an issue either, but.
Yeah, okay, I will talk to Frank or somebody and.
Yeah, I would talk to Frank or who's the, who's the other guy, um?
Randall.
Brad. Brad is the building inspector.
Yeah, but who's the water guy? Yeah, they have a plate in the right direction.
You know, who took his job, I think Jen did.
Um, the other thing I was talking, gonna talk about is, we're the, you know. We talked a little bit about where the solar panels are, about mowing underneath that, Bob and I went over and looked at it. I think it's gonna work, we're gonna try just mowing it and see how that goes.
Okay.
Um, we don't really wanna put any kind of a rock garden or anything in there with edging, because it's gonna silt in and it's gonna run over and it's just gonna be. Problems, if if this doesn't work, I thought maybe we could plant some wildflowers or something underneath it, just something that you don't have to maintain, you know. Kind of mull around.
Some little stuff that gets about this tall.
Well, yeah, if they make something like that, or if there is something.
Well, they do, I don't know what they call it, my wife's been planting this little purple stuff for years.
Yeah. So I mean, that'd be.
Talk to conservation.
We're, but we're gonna try mowing it, you know, there's one spot that's gonna be not ideal.
Don't hit your head, we're.
Yeah, we don't want no injuries there.
See, the other thing we're kinda thinking about is, is uh. Do we wanna be running a mower back and forth over there all the time, we got that Toro out there, it's gonna be worth trying to repair that to. Maybe that we could keep over there, so we don't have to drive along.
Have you looked at that thing at all or what? Yeah, I mean, it is fairly good size, and I don't know what the issue is with it, if it's a gearbox. I don't, I don't know that there wouldn't be one available to use one somewhere, if that's the case, and if it's something that can be tore apart, repaired.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's a number on the box, wherever.
Yeah, so anyway, that's something I'm gonna kinda try and look into and see.
I mean, it looks like a decent enough machine, yeah.
No, I I agree.
I mean, it's a matter of getting enough to get there.
Yeah, I'd like to just try and get it started and see how, see how it runs, and what what's wrong with it.
Yeah, we have to, yeah, we have to take it somewhere to get it looked at. I mean, if that would be logical, if we could use that.
Yeah, I think that'd be.
I mean, it's not a long ways ago, but still.
Couple of things we may need would be a, maybe a. Lawnmower, a push lawnmower, maybe, just to kinda get under some spots and. And the other thing we're thinking about was a snowboard for those sidewalks, because they're, I don't think we'd be able to get up on there very good with the. Kubota or anything to push snow around there. So I mean, that's a.
Wanna say one time we had some of them at the care facility, but I'm not sure, look in that room with that turret, there might be one of them in the care facility also.
We have a little old one here, I don't know, we haven't tried running that thing yet, but I mean, I guess if that would.
There's not in that building up there either.
No, there's, I think there might be a.
Double open face building to a salto, I mean, I know, I know we started some stuff in there for the last couple. Yeah.
It was orange, I'll say.
Yeah, I can't, I I actually, I think some of that stuff. Come out of the waste authority building that time, and I think it all went.
And then as far as when, when the building gets up and running, I mean, there's probably some things that are gonna be needed in there, you know. It's a floor scrubber, vacuum cleaner, you know, all the cleaning utensils and things.
And I guess I don't know what what's all included with his, you know, when I, when we started this, to me, it was supposed to be turned key, so I don't know if that was included. In his kitchen equipment, or if that's included in the maintenance equipment, if that's included in anything or where.
Well, it, I mean, I know John's not real sold on having a floor scrubber, but I think it's the thing to have, I mean, there's a lot of. Floors that are gonna need to be scrubbed at least once a week, you know, or whatever. I mean, then you don't have all the water on the floor with those machines, you know, for somebody to slip on.
Yeah, and I'm not familiar with them, I know you've used them at the school and in college or wherever, both of you. Know more about them machines than I do, I don't know a lot about.
Let this other thing go for a different time, and then, I mean, that's all. Well, I just, I just have old jail wrote down with a question mark, you know, what? What is that ever gonna be?
Actually, somebody approached me this morning about that, as now you said that, so we'll, we'll have to talk about that.
But I mean, when they move out, I mean, will we be going over there at all for? Link up maintenance, anything, I mean.
So I can foresee that being a um. I don't know, till we get this thing up and running, then they're all completely moved out, or whatever it may be. Is there a holding spot over there, is somebody else going over there, I I. It's all in next, it's all in conversation yet, I would say.
Okay, as long as you guys are talking about it.
Well, it's been brought up a few times, and actually, somebody brought it up this morning to me, so. It was kinda odd, but.
And then, the other thing, we're just gonna kinda maybe talk a little bit about. How we take care of that building, the new building.
So I guess we talked about that a little bit too, what 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 do you guys expect, or since you've been here, you've both been here at X amount of time. Uh, things working out for you, are you overly busy, are you understaffed, overstaffed?
So, okay, I'll just.
Not overstaffed?
I can give my, I'm wanting to take a minute to say, I give you my observation, I mean, so with this railing project, with some of these lighting projects, I've been using Bob. Pretty extensively for that kinda stuff, you know, he helps with snow removal, you know. I mean, I can't, I can't expect him to do that all the time and keep up with his work here, you know, that's, that's for sure. I I went over, I mean, I guess I got the blueprints. The building size is roughly from, if you took the auditor's office and went to the front doors, that's about the size of the. Administration side of the new jail. We kinda talked about it a little bit, you know. We don't think that we can send somebody over there and do it justice, you know, and keep, keep up here. I don't know, I mean, we think it's a four hour job, four hour day job for somebody to maintain that area. Basically, it would be cleaning restrooms, vacuuming, uh, scrubbing floors. I think. We would probably want to scrub that floor in the jail that goes around the. How do you call it, the?
Administration to the.
The walkway, the cell hallway type.
So that walkway between the cells and where the control center or whatever it's called is. You know, we'd probably scrub that with a floor scrubber at least once a week or whatever. I don't know, I mean, that's just, we talked about it a lot.
That's the bare minimum, and then all of a sudden, there's gonna be glass to clean, walls gonna be cleaned, there's gonna. The workload's gonna keep picking up.
So, yeah, I mean, and we talked about that too, and and I I don't know that there's anything that they put in their budget for uh. Personnel, I have talked, you know, just because we were here or there, talked to other counties and. It wasn't a big problem for them, but I just don't, yeah, I just. Don't know what their personnel in that building thinks about it. Are they gonna help, are they gonna take a half hour a day, you know, clean my own room, I think that's a responsibility. Anybody has as a business owner or whatever, I had to sweep the floor, I had to clean my office, I had to do whatever, you know.
I kinda talked to Bob a little bit, and I said, you know, I ideally, I guess my expectation would be that. They could kinda do some of their basic. Basic housekeeping type of thing, and maybe we just, like you say, go and run the floor scrubber once a week, you know. Type of deal, or a deep clean on the toilets once a week, because really, they're not, you're not gonna have a lot of public. Traffic in there, it's their offices, I would, that's how I'm envisioning it, you know, type of deal. So, you know, like.
There should be a lot of public or or a lot of. Of dirt being tracked.
Get them off of their shoes and boots and whatever, but, you know, again.
Again, they have to have some responsibility. To run vacuum cleaner once a week or whatever it may be, I I don't know that, but that's.
So I'm just gonna give one observation that, that my experience with this type of a setup. What I would see probably happening is, if we go over there on Friday to do this cleanup, it's gonna be a bigger cleanup than.
Yeah.
If we were there all the time, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's gonna let everything till Friday.
Gonna get anything and it'll be there all the time.
But it's, from our standpoint, you know, if we have to go over and clean it, I think that's probably. I mean, just speaking with experience, when when you do that, when you say, well, somebody else is gonna come and do your job. You know, do that part of the job at a different time. It gets left. Left for others.
Yeah, and and honestly, we talked about it, I mean, we had another part timer here, if you will, and at one time, and and we still have that. Um, to work on, so, I mean, we discussed whether you you guys. Thought you could do it and be adjusted for per se, or if we need another part timer, or we, you know.
And we talked.
There's a lot unknowns, that's what we're, you know.
Yeah, and you're right about that, I mean, we talked about that, and we like the idea of getting.
Compensated.
Compensated for, but we're not sure that we'll have the time to do that.
Yeah, and that that you'll have to know, we'll have to trust you about that, and 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 do we start out that way and see how much we can do? Again, we're open for discussion.
So, some other things, I mean, I know in that building behind the jail, there's talk of doing some work in there, I mean, is that? Something that the expectation would be that we would do that, or that would be sent out to somebody else, or?
You mean, what do you mean?
Building. I didn't know anything about Jim, John Hancis and so.
That's our training.
Let's, let's get things running here first, before we build the training center.
Well, anyway, I mean, that's just my feeling.
So, and here's our thoughts, or here's mine anyway, I mean, I appreciate this, I appreciate the railing being done. I appreciate other things that were hold on hold for a period of time, that's getting done, hopefully we get caught up. On some of them minimal, just, you know, and things that take time, and and can move on or have time for some of this, you know. Um, again, you're gonna have to know how many. If you're gonna spend time at the care facility, if you're gonna spend time at the senior center, any given week is gonna change, I imagine. So, um.
And I mean, the new jail will eventually have maintenance issue, you know, I mean, there'd be things that probably.
Oh, yeah.
Grease bearings and replace filters and whatever, you know. So.
And, I mean, you're still figuring Danny into this equation, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, I know he's been helping you some with some other things too, but, you know.
Yeah, I mean. I'm not sure he'd be the person to send over there.
Yeah.
You know, and there's different options, do we look at hiring another part time person, do we look at?
Do they come in once, twice a week for four hours or whatever it is, you know, and?
And just do it that way, and then it's, you know.
I mean, we could.
I mean, if more maids come in and, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, I can check that out, I mean, I can make a few phone calls and see.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to look at our options at some point.
Cost would be to clean up square footage of that office space.
Again, it basically comes down to you guys to see how much time you got, I mean, I know you're using him for other projects right now, but again. Hopefully, we get caught up with some of them projects.
And I would say even.
A lot of it's coordinating, you know, the carpet thing, you're not really gonna have a lot of time involved, other than.
Yeah.
Moving stuff or whatever, but it's coordinating and get it done, and.
And you spend a fair amount of time kinda doing some of that stuff.
Yeah, I agree.
Here in house, if it comes, you know, I, I myself don't see a problem with. At the end of the day, when they're leaving, they set the garbage cans by the door, so that you're not having to, you know. Seems minimal, but still, if you're having to walk behind every desk and get cans and.
That definitely takes time.
Stuff like that, it takes time, you know, so why can't they? You know, you want your trash emptied, they're setting by the door at the, you know. You guys empty them, you set them back by the door, when they come in in the morning, they walk it back to their desk. You know, I don't see a problem with changing some things up like that, if it makes it. Work for the system as a whole. You know, you guys are doing, I'd say, a good share of, this place smells good, it looks better. You know.
Well, we appreciate that, but.
You know, so if we, if. We as the rest of the community here in the courthouse can help out, and I would say that's a little way. To make your job flow smoother, then I think we need to look at doing something like that.
Yep, all conversation to be had, I guess, we appreciate the update. I mean, again, if there's issues, we don't need to wait for a week or whatever either, you know, make sure you bring them forward and.
Yeah.
Keep us on schedule and keep us up to date.
Okay.
About needs and wants and. So, again, we talked about that, you know, we had um personnel here, so something that you think you can tackle and. There's compensation to be had, so be it if we need something else to be done and check into part-time help or.
If, if we did look into part-time help, what do you think would be the minimum amount of time that we could offer somebody and get somebody?
I have no idea. What, what's Danny doing now? Is he doing four hours a day?
Could you get somebody for three hours? You think, I mean, I don't, I don't, I mean.
I guess I don't know, you know, I mean. Here's what I'm telling you where the workforce is. It's Danny, somebody that's retired or somebody that's looking to get out of the house in the morning or. Um, get away from the wife or get away from the husband or. I mean, basically just getting out and doing something, you know.
It may be some, it may be something that it's. You know, whatever, but maybe not four hours every day, maybe they, they do a day or.
And maybe it's every other day, four hours or something.
Or six hours every other day.
I mean, it's like. You guys and Danny or whoever, I mean, if you need to work now or then and work later or work, you know, start later or work later and. I mean, we're not opposed to that as long as things work out here that, um, I see that. It looks like we spread some dirt and filled some things in and plant some grass or something.
Well, the other thing we kinda thought about too was maybe if we did hire a part-time person, maybe they could spend some time in the afternoons over there. Then at four thirty, maybe come over here and take care of some of the things that need to be done at that time. That'd be an option or?
Yeah, I guess it's, things are options, but again, they have to be budgeted for. If we're talking about it in the next fiscal year. I mean, again, I think we did leave some. So it was minimal to, to the guess we don't know. Like I said, too many things that are unanswered at this point that.
Okay.
I'm not so sure we're gonna get in the building, but you know.
Wanna talk at all or not? I don't know, we pretty much hashed everything over and we had that, you know, talked a lot about some of this stuff, so.
And that's what we need to know though. I mean, if you've got something you wanna bring forward, bring it forward.
We're good.
You want Mary to leave or something like that? No, we're good, yeah. Like I said, if there's things that come forward, you have our emails, you have my phone number, you have, yeah. I mean, we, we talk back and forth a little bit once in a while about other things, but.
Good.
Happy to hear from you. Alright. Thanks, gentlemen.
Yes, third, fourth.
Okay, is there anything else before the board? Are we still in a meeting? Holy smokes, after lunch. I, do I have to make you the chair for a second then? As chair, I can adjourn. Well, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Have a great day.